Good afternoon.
All right, six o'clock. All right, at six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call our town hall meeting to order. Thank you very much for coming out. It's very exciting to see a bigger crowd than we've had in the past. So thank you so much. A couple things to throw out right quick for you on Friday, August the seventeenth, or excuse me, September the seventeenth, which is this Friday, is Constitution Day celebration in Watkinsville at Rocket Field. So that'll start at three forty-five on Friday. Also, there's a drive-through Rabies Vaccination Clinic, and that's on September twenty-fifth. It's from nine AM to one PM, and that's at the Animal Services location. Kind of one of the things we said we'd talk about would be transportation. So we're gonna start off with that, and then we'll get around to opening up to any questions. I know we've got some folks here that may have some questions. So we'll go through right quick some of the projects that we got going on, and then kind of talk a little bit about T-Spots, and then we'll see what everybody's interested in. As you know, we're working on design for two roundabouts. On State Route fifty-three, concept plans for those have both been submitted to Department of Transportation, and they're working through their process now. The current schedule for the Snow's Mill will be starting in twenty twenty-four, and the one at Ray's Church Road will be construction starting in it'll be January, excuse me, January twenty-four for the Snow's Mill and October twenty-four for Ray's Church Road at Malcolm Bridge and State Route fifty-three. State Route fifty-three at Union Church Road, GDOT has completed the signal design and is currently routing it through the design, the design through the internal approval process. So hopefully, very soon, we'll have a red light at Union Church in fifty-three, which has been a very long time in the process. Phase two of Morris Hill, which is Experiment Station Road, runs from Butler's Crossing to the bridge at four forty-one. Design is complete. The right-of-way is clear. The award is, the contract has been awarded, but they have not issued a notice to proceed yet. They were waiting on some final permits from EPD. I think they have those. We're expecting any day that'll be turned loose. There is some activity you'll see with some surveying going on now. We have an all-system safety grant from DOT to expand the travel lanes on Simonton Bridge Road and Rocky Branch Road. So on each side of the road, we'll be expanding the lanes by two feet, and that contract has been awarded by Department of Transportation, and they're trying to figure out the best time to get that started. And so that construction will be coming up as well. US four forty-one at La Vista Road. County and sponsor into design for that intersection improvement, and GDOT will be looking to use a quick response funding for the construction. So the design concept has been submitted. GDOT, they're working through their processes, and then we'll go through with the final engineering on that. And so hopefully, something will be going by the end of the year, construction-wise, on that project. Everybody ask about the four-laning of US four forty-one, that's scheduled construction in twenty twenty-five. I'm not sure that's a very hard date, but that's what they have on their schedule right now. On Highway one eighty-six and North High Shoals, the bridge will be closed down, torn down, and then rebuilt, and that's scheduled in twenty twenty-four. Same for the Klotfelter Bridge over Barber Creek. That will be torn down and rebuilt as well, and that's in twenty twenty-five. On three sixteen, we have the O'Conne Connector, which will be a full interchange. Virgil Langford, which will be a flyover, and Jimmy Daniel Road is the interchange. All that construction will run from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven. So they've already started developing concepts on all those two full interchanges. Julian Drive is scheduled for twenty twenty-eight for a flyover. Morris Hill Road in twenty twenty-seven for a flyover. McNutt Creek in twenty twenty-six for a flyover. Dials Mill, Dials Mill Extension is a twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe for construction. We've had a lot of interest in that. There's been surveyors out in the subdivision. Talked with, just got off the phone just a little while ago with someone from GDOT. They're gonna, they are gonna present the concepts to the, in a public meeting, engage input from the public. They're, they're hoping to offer up the four options for McNutt Creek, that's because of the Dials Mill, Dials Mill Extension interchange. So once they have concepts developed for, they're gonna try to do all the interchanges at one time and have one big public meeting for everybody to come in and kind of come in on. In November, in November, we're gonna have on the ballot an opportunity for you to vote in a one percent transportation special purpose local option sales tax. And that will generate anywhere from thirty-seven point nine million dollars up to forty-eight point one million the sales go in that time. The, that will be shared with the cities in, or within the county as well. We'll have Bishop, they'll receive between three hundred and three hundred and eighty thousand. Bogart would receive between one point one and one point five million. North High Shoals will be eight hundred and thirty-seven up to one point one million. Watkinsville will be three point eight million up to four point eight. And then O'Conne County's remaining share will be thirty-seven point nine up to forty-eight point one. So what we've done, we've broken it down into four, four areas that the funding will be used for. The first one is related services. That'll be a ten point five million up to thirteen point one million. We have multi-use paths. That'll be between three million and three point seven billion. And then we have safety and intersection improvements, four million up to five million. And the remaining amount, which will be twenty point four up to twenty-six point two, will be for roadway paving. So as far as the related services, what we've done is looked at what the state allows the T-Spots money to be spent for, and we've identified up to one mill of current property tax that can be shifted over to the T-Spots funding. So the recommendation, if T-Spots passes, will be to have a one-mill reduction in the property tax for FY twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. After that, we'll have to see funding's looking, and if, if the board decides at that time to try to continue on with the T-Spots. The pass, as you know, we've been, there's been a lot of interest in non-motorized connectivity in O'Conne County. One of the things we're working first item looking at Hog Mountain Road, which will be from Butler's Crossing to Lake Welbrook. We did the widening of the lanes there as to the multi-use pass. Other paths have been talked about over the years, or Daniel's Bridge Road, which run from Hog Mountain Road all the way back over to the O'Conne Connector and Morris Hill. Union Church Road from State Route fifty-three all the way to State Route one eighty-six. And on-term plan would be to try to connect OVP, both high school, LAS. And those was pretty aggressive. We're not gonna be able to do that all. We, what we will do, if it passes, we'll, we'll form a task force to look at them and have people kind of rank what they think is the most important ones to get done. What we don't want to do after nowhere, so we're trying to between nodes as quickly as possible. Safety of, safety and intersection improvements, some of the ones that have been on the list in the past, and also in our transportation study we did several years ago. Burr Harris Road at State Route fifty-three, Conley Ferry Road at Astendale, Union Church at New High Shoals. And also, a lot of our lane widths are, you know, still ten foot, so we want to do, expand those to twelve foot as quickly as possible. And then, like I said, the majority will be going to roadway paving. So based on our current rating system, how we could rate road. And they, and they do a visual inspection, and so based on their rankings right now, there's a hundred and fifty-one point one miles with a pavement condition score that would be considered poor condition. A hundred and fifty-one miles. If T-Spots passes, with that, the amount, dollar amount we've got, we could do between eighty and a hundred miles extra paving from what we would be able to do without T-Spots. We're also in the process of having a more technical review of the roadways, so we'll have a better idea on this ranking and how many miles are in poor condition versus better. And that will create the list from which the T-Spots funds are expended based on this engineering study. So they're actually driving, yeah, thank you. And that'll be just doing some kind of LIDAR and figuring out how deep the base is and taking pictures. It's a pretty neat process, though. It'll be interesting to see how that rolls out. So we think this is a good project. That's why we brought it before the citizens, and we if you have any questions about T-Spots or any of the transportation projects or anything related to roadways, we'll be glad to take those now. If you can, go to a mic and just state your name and for the record.
Good evening. Are we live here? Come on. Okay, I reckon this would be, I reckon this would be as good of a segue as any, now that we're talking about transportation. You brought up La Vista Road. In the Board of Commissioners Town Hall Meeting, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, six PM Eastern Time. I'd like to say, good evening, O'Conne County Board of Commissioners. My name is Andy. And I'm a proud husband and father to five young children, ranging in ages from two years of age to fourteen, all of whom are in the O'Conne County School System. Our family is very proud to live and be here, and in what I consider not just the best county in all of Georgia, but perhaps within our great nation as well. We have lived on La Vista Road for more than six years now. As you all know well, La Vista Road connects four forty-one with Spartan Lane and is directly across from the Presbyterian Village. I'm here before you today to address an issue that I've been trying to resolve since two thousand and eighteen, nearly three years ago to the day. The issue is that of complete traffic law negligence and total disregard for posted speed limit signs and stop signs along La Vista Road. Mr. Daniel, on Thursday, October fourth, two thousand and eighteen, at ten forty-two AM, I wrote to you. I said, "Good morning, Mr. Daniel. I'm corresponding today to bring a rather unfortunate and yet consistent concern to you, and in the hopes that you can provide assistance and an immediate remedy, the high rate of speed at which the Vista Road is traversed." The speed, speed limit on La Vista Road is thirty miles per hour, or at least it should be. It's posted as such. Unfortunately, this is not remotely close to the high speeds at which individuals drive along this county road. Just yesterday, if I had a radar gun, I would have clocked no less than five cars traveling in excess of sixty miles per hour. This has gotten stopped. We have lived on La Vista for three years now, this is two thousand and eighteen, and this extremely high and dangerous speeding has been consistent. We cannot even walk as a family with our five dogs in this road for fear of superspeeders. Bike riding for our young children's not even an option. I'm requesting that speed bumps be put in place on La Vista Road as soon as possible. I'm also very much concerned about the stop sign at the end of Knob Creek that ends at La Vista. During the last three years, I have not seen one car actually come to a complete stop, not one. Stop signs are not a mere suggestion. They are, in fact, traffic laws. Most of the cars right, roll right on through that stop sign, some still going twenty miles per hour. Please review these concerns and requests and respond with a course of action for the safety of all of us and our young children that live along La Vista and contribute massity property taxes for the benefit of our, of our county. Thank you for your time and all forthcoming efforts. You responded a short time later, Mr. Daniel, and you said, "Andy, thank you for taking time to express your concerns. We will have our Public Works Department take a look at any possible solutions to address your concerns. In addition, I would encourage you to discuss enforcement options with the Sheriff's Office. Sincerely, John." Which I then did with Lieutenant Wozniak. I requested a solar radar trailer, speed detection trailer, a solar-powered radar trailer, one of those speed detection trailers, be put in my front yard, which I happily obliged and even requested him to do so. For two weeks, the straight, the trailer was stationed in my front yard, and it generated the following data over a two-week period of time. One thousand cars per day. Eighty-five percent drove faster than fifty miles per hour. This is twenty miles per hour faster than this posted speed limit and through a neighborhood. This would be the same as me driving sixty-seven percent faster than the sixty-five miles per hour speed limit around the loop of Athens, which is one hundred and eight miles per hour. This is the definition of a superspeeder. Other findings and data prove that ten percent drove faster than forty-five miles per hour, and five percent drove faster than fifty-five miles per hour. Five percent of a thousand is fifty cars. So fifty cars throughout the course of a day are going faster than fifty-five miles per hour through my neighborhood on a road posted for thirty miles per hour. At Mr. Daniel's direction, I did what I was supposed to do. I reached out to Lieutenant Wozniak. We found the data. I requested from Lieutenant Wozniak that the O'Conne County Police Patrol and Monitor La Vista and to issue citations for speeding and running stop signs. I am one hundred percent certain that not one citation or ticket has ever been issued on this road. Why is that? It's a county road. And traffic laws should be enforced. It was suggested me, to me, by an O'Conne County Police, Police Officer to contact the Georgia State Patrol to monitor the Vista Road. I know GSP agents, I requested as such, and they said that they would. In the over six years that I've lived on La Vista Road, I personally can count less than eight O'Conne County Police Patrol vehicles and one Georgia State Patrol car ever along La Vista Road. I've reached out to Jody Woodall, our Public Works Director for O'Conne County, and have been met with similar non-permanent remedies and simply offered further suggestions that all have ended up in a perfectly enclosed circle of zero proactive measures taken or executed. Moving along the forward, I continue to reach out to Mr. Daniel, and I'm not calling you out, Mr. Daniel. I'm simply stating the fact that we have a track record. You know me, you stood in my driveway on March twentieth of two thousand and nineteen. At two thirty PM on March twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, you sat with me at my driveway, and we watched La Vista Road. And you were like, wow, I remember you saying, wow. Right in front of my home, five children. My wife's a veterinarian. I've got five kids, now seven dogs. We permanently foster. And nothing's happened. Moving on, Thursday, April eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, eight forty-one PM. Hello, John. It's been weeks since we met at our home and discussed the horrendous violation of traffic laws in our street. I can assure you that since our meeting, that it has gotten even worse, and the police attendant dropped off the last radar-detecting trailer, trailer signs. I physically sat out there and watched and calculated the passer's by. I saw many at sixty-five miles per hour and most at fifty-five plus miles per hour, even with the trailer radar in clear view. Please speak with your engineers and figure out a speed bump solution immediately. Something has got to be done on our road immediately. This is a chief and primary concern for our family. As our representative, it should now also be yours. You replied Friday, May tenth, two thousand and nineteen, "Andy, we are researching traffic calming solutions. I understand your frustration and concerns. Adding traffic calming to county roads will require a policy change, and we have to have criteria related to safety, stormwater, and funding. This type of work does take some detailed research." Mr. Daniel, that was two years and four months ago. Still nothing. Nothing has been done. So here I am, almost three years to the day that I started down this path to have these traffic law-breaking issues remedied. We still cannot walk along La Vista, ride bikes, or walk animals. The development at the Spartan, at the back of Spartan Lane, Spartan Estates has only and further exacerbated this issue as now the superspeeders are dump trucks, tractor trailers, cement trucks. The high speed is the same, but the vehicles have just gotten much larger. More mass, more density, more weight, higher rates for dangerous conditions. I am here to appeal to my great county's elected board of commissioners to please help reconcile this issue and this extremely dangerous but easily remedied public threat. Here is how. You mentioned T-Spots funds. You said it could be as high as forty-one point four million. I certainly have paid my share of property taxes. We need built-in solutions, so I'm requesting speed bumps. I'm requesting a roundabout to be engineered. You just mentioned roundabouts. I'm a great believer of them. They work. I'm requesting a roundabout to be engineered somewhere further down on La Vista from Knob Creek towards Spartan Lane, and I'm requesting a consistent O'Conne County Police presence along La Vista that actually has the radar detection guns and that can write tickets and citations and enforce the law. It is a county road, correct? Is everybody familiar with La Vista Road? It's a county road? Why can't the O'Conne County Police Detective monitor? Mr. Horton, you've been great to this county. I don't know why we can't send out some officers out there and just ping some guys and just get the visual that this is being
Are you asking me now?
What, it's not so
Here's the thing, I understand.
I hear
And I think I've spent enough time
Over La Vista, dealing with some rezones, so I have a pretty good understanding. What I can't do is tell the sheriff what to do. That's something we can't do. We can make it known to the sheriff that there, we are getting complaints from residents, can they in, in do enforcement, but I can't tell the sheriff to go and put deputies on La Vista. But I, I will, I tell you what, tomorrow, the sheriff will know that you said something to us tonight. And, but it's up to him as to how he allocates his resources.
Yes, sir. And the worst part about it is between seven thirty and eight thirty in the morning, and four thirty, three to five thirty, that's when most of the officers are, officers are directing traffic at the great school system. So we effectively taking that human talent off of that critical time. If you pinning these individuals and holding them accountable, their gross negligence of traffic, that's my concern. So, Mr. Horton, I think you just addressed and really resolved. My suggestion is, can we please use T-Spots funds, put in permanent built-in solutions? Mayor Broderick and I were talking about this at our Child's Cross Country Meet a week ago. Let's not, let's not even factor in the O'Conne County, our great O'Conne County Police Force. Let's put in built-in solutions, something that they have to notice. Otherwise, it's gonna mess up their transmission when they have a speed bump going sixty miles an hour. Right? And I don't want to talk about the sheathing or the rain flow and what the speed bumps do to that. I've researched over a hundred different makes and models of speed bumps. They're inexpensive. They're less than five hundred dollars each. I can install with apertures, holes underneath where the water would flow under there. This isn't New Orleans. Like, we're not relying on a levee system by which the water falls, hurricane rainfall comes in, and then it cascades up, one levee and comes down the other like this, and it continues moving on. That's not what a speed bump does. It would divert the water down La Vista and into the huge drain corridors that run on parallel sides of La Vista Road. So please, let's not consider in the survey or the, or the study that never came, what's gonna happen to the rain flow on La Vista Road. We get four massive torrential rain flows, rainfalls a year in the summertime. So don't, don't, let's please not talk about flooding and what, what traffic, speed bumps are gonna do to rain sheathing and rain. It's simply not. It's frivolous. So by request, we don't even need T-Spots funds for this. We just need, they're five hundred dollars each, times two on both sides, a thousand. If you just did ten of those along La Vista, five of those, you're looking at five to ten thousand dollar cost. And they, it's something that they could do in two hours' worth of work. And it would literally dismiss a massive public safety concern, at least for me. I speak for all of the residents on La Vista Road, because I meet them, I talk to them. They won't walk La Vista Road. They won't walk and exercise and walk their dogs along La Vista Road. As mentioned, the definition of a superspeeder is what? Fifteen miles over the speed limit? Twenty? Mr. Horton, your experience, sir, what, what is a superspeeder?
Be honest with you, it's been over fifteen years. I don't remember the exact number, but it's
So what would happen if I were going a hundred and eight miles an hour? If I were going sixty-seven percent above the speed limit, which is sixty-five, that's, that's a hundred and eight miles an hour. If I were going sixty-seven percent above the speed limit around the Athens Loop, I think that's ten. What would happen to me? Would I get my license revoked?
I'm not the judge.
Okay. Would, would my insurance triple?
Well, it depends. I mean, I'm not, you're asking
Me questions that I don't have any control over, so I don't know what your insurance company would do. I don't know what the judge would do. I don't even know if you got stopped, if the police officer, if it was in Athens, Clark County, if they'd even give you a ticket. So I, I don't know.
Well, I would think if I were going seventy-five miles per hour down Milledge, I would think my license would be revoked if I were cop doing so.
Well, I don't police Milledge.
I understand.
I, I can, I do understand that the bypass, if we're getting off of O'Conne County, to be honest with you, and we're talking about Milledge, those are two different types of roads. When I policed over and I was the chief at the university, our traffic flow, our speeds were much different. But what I can promise you is, I will certainly, because I think this is the first time I've talked to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will certainly look at the situation and what might be able, we might be able to do about any kind of raised elevated streets, because I'm familiar with those at the university. And I will certainly make sure that Sheriff Hale knows about your issues. But I can't tell the sheriff to go over there and run radar
Yes, sir.
or to write tickets. I can tell him to help you out and do what he can, but
Sir, I feel like, I feel that for three years, my concerns have fallen on blind eyes and deaf ears, and I'm, I'm just, I'm sick of the talk. I would really just rather appeal to you gentlemen and what we can do as a board, what you gentlemen can do as a board for the built-in environment, speed bumps and a roundabout. I think that would be fantastic. You know, you put a speed bump right there in the Knob Creek stop sign, if you're familiar with that. They have it. Like I said, stop signs are suggestions to these individuals. They don't abide by them. But I live there, and I've got five young children, and I have to, I put a PVC pipe down at the end of our road so you cannot pass this PVC pipe. Yeah, nobody wants to live in fear. I'm just trying to be a, you know, Papa Bear. So I just, I just am appealing to you, gentlemen. Can we do something more drastic, more permanent to finally mitigate this? I'm sick of complaining about it. I'm sick of calling Sergeant Bryant and Lieutenant Wozniak and Sergeant Smith and asking them to bring out a trailer, which they never do. Jody Woodall, a week ago tomorrow, put up the solar-powered units that he bolted and affixed to the actual structural speed limit signs, and that worked for about three days. And now I feel like it's a game with these individuals, especially the Athens Academy crowd blitzing through there at seven fifty-five in the morning, see if they can double it. That's what I see. You know, I've got an office, I've got a commercial property, but I work from home three days a week from my dining You know, I've got an office, I've got a commercial property, but I work from home three days a week from my dining room table. And I'm constantly looking at the scene twelve hours a day. And it doesn't stop. And it hasn't stopped for six years I have lived there. So please help me. It won't take ten thousand dollars of our county to make a drastic improvement of our La Vista Road. Go ahead, sir.
I'm going to trip out of your concern because it's a very important safety of all citizens in the county before. That's why we've got so many problems going on or changing your safety road. You think we've got a lot of, um, but you're not the only one.
I agree.
Dozens of roads that have contacted us, just like we're seeing right now. So it's not just ten thousand dollars. It could be thirty-six roads we gotta do that to because people are speeding across the county that we are having trouble fixing. And so it's a sad story. But I don't want you to think it's just one road we got to fix because when we fix one, we've got to move to all the others to make sure that we're doing the same safety improvements for them as we do for you. And it's not, I just don't believe that we just set it aside. We are, we are building working areas all the time and we have to think long-term in a lot of things.
And Mr. Saxon, I appreciate that. I appreciate that feedback, but the squeaky wheel gets to work and this wheel's been squeaking for three and a half years now.
Yeah, and I would hear you, but I tell you, when I've done the roads, I'm playing the last three, eight years.
Okay. Well, like I said, I just, anything that can be done, it's a.
Thank you for coming out and talking about it and we appreciate it. And, uh, I imagine this is going to be talking about a lot.
It's a runway. La Vista Road is a runway. It's a beautiful road. You know, houses are set back and those UPS drivers, those FedEx drivers, those cement trucks. They make that turn right in front of Knob Creek. It's wide open. I can hear them running.
Sure.
And it's. I used to ride motorcycles on La Vista when I was a young kid. So, yeah, I've been there.
Last time, last time I checked, three or four, thirty-six in the middle.
Part of the three or four. Mason, Mason Hill, Mason Hill.
It's not beautiful, it's church, that's three or four, they make a bike.
I'm aware of that, yes, sir. All right, gentlemen, thanks. I've got to go to.
Can I just add something, Andy? I appreciate you, uh, come tonight and, and talk about that. I'm the new kid on the block, but I hadn't been in office, not even a day. And I received a, an email from one of your neighbors on Spartan Lane. And he conveyed the same frustration that you're expressing tonight of the, you know, the unabated traffic from the. And of course, he laid it at the doorstep to the Athens Academy, you know, school being in your neighborhood. And as you say, added the new homes that are being built. And so I've, I've been, you know, communicating to this, your neighbor for a number of months since November. And we have offered to come out, or I have, to, to, to meet with the neighbors. I asked him if there was a homeowners association. And, and he never did reply back. So I don't know if y'all have a homeowners association. What about it at Spartan, I mean, uh, Spartan Lane?
No, sir, to the best of my knowledge, there's no H.
Okay. Well, I know that, that the neighbors in Chadwick have the same concerns that you do. And as Mr. Horton talked about when we had that recent rezon up there. I became a lot more knowledgeable of that situation than I ever had before. And I know that Presbyterian Homes has added a, you know, an additional pressure on that intersection up there. I think Chairman Daniel had mentioned that there is some conversation from DOT, is it called a R. Curve? R. Cut to change the intersection configuration there with La Vista Road. Now, I'm, I can imagine in the morning and I, you know, those kids come to school, the parents bring. It's very easy to cut through La Vista. And I, and, and, and I know that I've had a conversation with the headmaster of Athens Academy as, as I'm sure Chairman Daniel has. He, all he can do is communicate to the parents, please refrain from going through the neighborhood.
Yes, sir, I read the news, I see it as well.
And, and it lasts for about a week. And then, you know, your neighbor called me back up. He said, well, it worked for about a week, you know? I noticed the difference, but not anymore. So the, the speed bumps that you talk about, I want to make sure that you, you say you represent all the neighbors. I want to make sure all the neighbors are, are, are buy into that idea of some sort of traffic calming. That we could do out there. There's other things besides speed bump that could probably do. A roundabout, of course, is an expensive option, but there may be other options that, that I've asked Chairman Daniel and, and Mr. Woodall to investigate. But it takes cooperation from the homeowners to, to, for those things to happen. Uh, when I suggested that to the, your neighbor, he, he was not interested in that. He just wanted me to put a gate up there in front of his house that stopped traffic. And of course, I know he was being facetious, but he was serious. He said, he sits there, he's retired, he's like you, he sees all these cars going up down the road. So I understand your frustration and, and I'm frustrated too. Because, you know, it's going to take everyone's efforts, including all of your neighbors, for us to come to a solution. And, and, and we need to, to make sure that whatever we do, that it is for the safety of our residents, especially of, of the kids. And I, I'm sorry that y'all not able to use La Vista Road like a neighbor, you know, like a normal neighborhood. And I hope maybe one day we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Horton, I appreciate that. And your comment about the group in Chadwick, Chadwick might have an HOA, I'm not familiar with them, but Chadwick is like the beginning of tax. It's like, that's where the, that's where the seven, that's where the F-16 taxes. That's when it starts picking up speed right there in Chadwick. And from there to, to Knob Creek, that's when they're just wide open. And it's just, they're getting lift off, lift off right there at Knob Creek, right in front of our house. So I can't speak to the gentleman in Spartan Lane. You said he was retired. He clearly doesn't have the same level of concern as me, as a father of five children between ages of two and fourteen. But it's, I see it and it's right in my eyes every day, all day. You know, roundabout or not, I think speed bumps would at least be the visual and the audible. Awareness that these super speeders need to recognize that maybe you slow down or they can, you know, rep the transmission of their own accord. That's not on me at that point. But we need some help, sir. And however it comes. I was passed on the Vista Road the other morning at seven fifty-one by an Athens Academy follower. I was going thirty and I maintained that speed because I'm the one here riding that, right? That son of a gun, sixty-five miles an hour, passed me on La Vista Road to get to his kid, get his kid to an elementary school. I reported. I think they checked on it. I'm not afraid of you. All right, I've got to get to OBP. I've got a six-year-old baseball game to go to. I appreciate your time. Wonderful to meet you, Mr. Horton and everyone. Thank you so much. Any note that you can provide, my family appreciates.
All right, thank you.
Chairman Daniel, Commissioner Chuck Williams, I live over Washington Springs Road in southern Indian County. I've got a couple of questions, but I think I've got a solution. I live over a dirt road that's about two and a half miles from end to end, and it's two and a half miles of speed bumps. So in spite of the county's best efforts to keep it straight and graded and whatnot, if you just want to come down and get the speed bumps off of our road and move them around the county, that'll, that'll be fine. No, I, I choose to live on a dirt road. I do have a question, really two-part question. Chairman Daniel, one is, do you anticipate, and again, I'm not advocating because I, I chose to live on a dirt road and still do. But do you advocate any paving of unpaved roads that would be accelerated if T. Sploss passes? And the second part of my question is big picture. You talked about as relates to repaving and, and, and other capital projects, what it would look like, what T. Sploss would do. Can you and any of the commissioners that wish to give us a sense of if T. Sploss doesn't pass? What do the next five or six years look like for O'Conne County as it relates to transportation? Thank you.
Far as dirt roads go. Basically, understanding that all the dirt roads that are paved, the people that remain on dirt roads like it. But if you know folks that are interested in, in doing it. We could definitely look at it. Typically, we'll go from dirt to the tar and gravel and then come back with asphalt on the next round. There was pretty aggressive campaign in the nineties for that. But what we're finding now is most people would prefer not to have the roads paved that are on the dirt roads. And so, so right now we're paving. Probably half of the mountain road we should be paving just to keep up on a lifecycle management program. And so it's, it's going to be eighty to a hundred miles less paving done without T. Sploss, if we did have it. Anybody want? Eighty to a hundred miles worth of pavement. And that'll help us get caught up on that one fifty-one. And then we'll go from there. If, if we're able to knock out the hundred miles, that, that's a big chunk of getting, helping us get caught up.
About this for a, a number of years. If it doesn't pass and we don't have that influx of money coming in. We're just going to continue getting further and further and further behind. Uh, I know, I live off of Simonton Bridge in subdivision, my subdivision, Victoria Station, I think Broadlands too. Those are three close by ones that I go in pretty frequent. You see all the patches. And I think what you'll end up seeing is a lot more patching. Because that'll be the best we can get to unless we have an influx of, of cash to jump on those roads. That's about the easiest and nicest way I can put it.
The transportation in our, I mean, I've watched it because I grew up here as well. And so I was, you know, a lot of our family property was on some of these dirt roads. And so it was, it was definitely an improvement at that point, you know, to get all these dirt roads. That way we didn't have to do the maintenance like we were, were in that day. And so we, we went through that step process that Chairman Daniel talked about. And what happened was is that as these areas developed, then the base and, you know, all the criteria that, that goes into typical. Real heavy traffic roads was not there. So it's very expensive to go back and mitigate that at this point. And to be able to go in and add base and, and the extra paving and things like this, very expensive. It's very inconvenient for the people that use that road. And so without T. Sploss, you're going to see a lot more deterioration as traffic and loads and things like that with these subdivisions continue to, to move through. And so I would be an advocate of it for that reason is that, you know, we, we went through a downturn in the economy. And so some of the funding was not there to actually do the road improvements during that time like we wanted to. And then, so we're catching up from, trying to catch up from that. But as Commissioner Horton and Chairman Daniel mentioned, that we really need to be able to. Get on some type of a maintenance schedule that would, would allow us to, to take care of these other problems. And, and if we don't have something like the T. Sploss, we're going to continue to get behind. And so I think you're going to see more failures, more potholes and, and we're just going to have to patch them. And that's all we can do. I would like to make one comment. I, I didn't want to continue with the other gentleman, but if he watches the video or, or the rest of you that are here, I wanted to comment on that. As, as we move through this whole process, trying to develop strategies for, and the policies for roads and things like that. May it be that we could change some of our policies to accept these speed bumps. But I do know that in the past, speed bumps have been, they've had the unintended consequences of. If you install the speed bumps, then you lose your right to, for the radar on that road. Now, that might have changed. I don't know, I haven't researched it. But, you know, you don't want to install speed bumps and then all of a sudden you can't enforce the speed limit on that road. Because you've, you've modified the road to a point that it doesn't meet the criteria now for radar. So I would like to get that out and, and if the gentleman would, you know, hears that, that comment, I'll be glad to follow up with that as well.
Chuck, I've got a comment about the.
The efforts for this T. Sploss, you know, is, is a tax. It's still a tax. It's a sales tax, it's a property tax. But I think what got my interest in supporting this, not only to, you know, catch up the, the maintenance of our, our street. But the, the probability of a rollback in our millage rate on our homeowners. And I think when he's, when he said that, because one thing that I'm interested in is to slow down the growth of our millage rate. And if this is an opportunity for us to, you know, convert it to a sales tax versus a homeowner tax. You got my vote for that and for that reason only. So, but, uh, yeah, that, that was one of the questions that was asked, you know, that was brought up in the. It's just, how long does it take to resurface, you know, to get around and resurface every street? Uh, I think Commissioner Horton wants to see all those roads resurfaced while he's still around. So please vote, uh, come November. Thank you.
We have people listening online, they can't hear you if you don't.
This is my first time at one of these things, so that's my fault, nobody else's. So I'm, I'm a rookie. Couple of quick things that seemed to, and, and you may have addressed it with some stuff that was outside, I didn't get here in time to see that. Two questions. I'm all for the millage reduction, all that. Concern I have is how much inflation's been built into the projections? And if, there's just one question. And if that inflation is absorbing the one percent, we're looking at reducing, what would happen? And then what part of the general budget on an annual basis is allocated for road improvement?
We're spending over two and a half million because a mill is worth about two point four million. So we've identified at least that much that, that we can legally take from the general fund expense into the T. Sploss. And there's more money on top of that. Each year we're increasing the amount of money we put into paving, just based on the inflationary growth of the, of the digest. So as the digest grows, we were putting more money into it. We can't do it at a level that will get us the eighty to a hundred miles that the T. Sploss will. As far as inflation.
So on an annual basis, you, you allocate each year on your budget, a certain percentage of that budget that's. Is maximum, the maximum amount that apparently is allowed to, to.
Well, no, we spend more than a two and a half million. I'll have to get that figure. I don't have it off the top of my head. So we're spending at least that on road maintenance. We're spending another one point six or seven million out of regular Sploss money to go to paving. We also get some grants from the Department of Transportation.
And, and probably the better way to ask this question is where do I go to get the information that would be specific with what your recurring budgetary allocation toward these types of projects are? And, and, you know, how much does the state participate, the federal government participate? Where would I, you know, I'm not looking for those kind of details today, but where, where would I go to get that? And second, again, address the inflationary concern about, I know, you know, like concrete right now is ridiculous, right? So we're not looking at spending the money today, but obviously inflation, uh, how, how do you build that into those types of numbers?
Well, well, the good part about the T. Sploss is as the inflation grows, it's taxing on the higher rate as well. So that helps cover some of that. The, the inflation is going to occur regardless of whether it's from the. And it's just kind of the cost of doing business. We, we're, that's one reason we're doing the scientific study of the roads. And once we get that information, we're going to come up, we'll try to come up with different ways, you know? One road should be paved this way versus this method on another and try to get that cost per mile down.
And, and again, it's, it's, it's not meant to mean, it's just a curiosity question, just a concept question of. When you do, or when, when these types of projections are formulated, what inflationary rate was calculated in the numbers you presented? I'm sure there was one. And I was just curious if you have access to that. Or again, if that goes back to my, where do I go to get the information question? And so I appreciate you guys making it available where we can ask these questions. And again, I'm just, I'm just new at this. I'm just learning some things that I should have learned when I was twenty, which was a long time ago.
If you'll get with me before you leave, we can send, we can email you, uh, the detailed budget that has all that information in it.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. I'm Rebecca Billings, actually running for mayor of Watkinsville. I had a couple of questions on transportation study of the quality of the roads. Is that transportation study online that I could look at?
The study of the roads is underway right now. You're talking about the measuring the depth and all that? Yes, that's currently in process. That should be out and hopefully in November. And we will have that available if you'd like to see it.
Okay, so I guess my question would be in November. When I look at that study, I could see the cities and areas of the county with the worst roads versus the ones that are fine, correct?
I don't know that the city, were they part of the study?
Well, well, cities, well, the, all the roads in Oconee County, basically. Is that this the study, transportation study?
Did the city?
For Oconee.
Okay, Watkinsville did participate, so they would have their list, they would be part of that the study as well. And there would be a ranking.
So I could look at that ranking and see where the worst roads in all of Oconee are?
Yes.
Okay, and then from what you told me, the one hundred and fifty-one point one miles of supposedly poor roads. If y'all decide to pave those, how do you decide which ones come first versus the ones at the end? Is that based on like traffic?
No, there that some of that does look at traffic counts, it'll look at the rating of the road. And, you know, if it's just condition, we try to go down the list. Sometimes we don't have enough to that we could do a whole, like we couldn't afford to do maybe the entire, well, Spartan Lane was a good example. We didn't have enough to do the entire Spartan Lane in one one cycle, so we did half, one cycle, came back and did another in in the second cycle. So some of it, some roads aren't. You may skip a road that's in poor condition because you don't have enough money to do that entire road and do one smaller road. And then come back the next year and pick it up. So there is some, there are some discretion from the public works on which roads get done.
Okay, do y'all ever get public input on on the decision making on roads? Or is that just kind of a county?
No, we try to keep that scientific because we don't want, you know, we try to keep the politics out of politics in that regard. And just looking at where the roads that need to be paved and and trying to get it done that way.
And then as far as T spas funds, the past two years, you know, we kind of lost money. Any money that we will be getting from the federal government, is that going to be put back into T spas and used the same way or is that?
I'm not sure what your question is there.
So I know for certain cities are getting a certain amount of money to be used specifically for, you know, infrastructure and road, you know, development or paving. Is the county getting any of that money and using it likewise for?
Right now, yes, the county will get seven point eight million. And right now, road infrastructure was not part of the list of approved items, it's broadband. It has to do with waters and sewer projects. And also there's some in there for loss revenue or or another bucket. Specifically, roads are not part of this particular bill. There's another bill they're working on now that may include some roadway stuff, but right now.
So no transportation?
No.
Part of that, okay.
This is broadband and and water sewers where we're looking to spend that money at this point, depending on how the rules, the final rules are not out yet.
I think that's it, thank you.
In in the years that I've been around, good things happen, we come across, you know, some some monies become available that we didn't really plan for. And we at times have put that into paving a little bit more of a road. But we're we're not talking about great sums. I mean, even the monies that are allocated in a a current spas is really, if you look at the list, and we try to cover a lot, you know, Parks and Recs has issues. The Water and Sewer Department, they've got issues. You name it, all the departments have got something, Sheriff's Department, vehicles. So we may be anticipating, what, thirty-nine million total to be divided? Mostly the county is going to get it, but the cities would also get a share. And you start breaking it down, you know, we may need a a big project out of Parks and Rec. It may take up several million dollars. And so at the end of the day, roads may get a a small amount. It it, you know, it's it's a lot to me, but in the road business, it's not that that kind of money. But we do try to find money if it's available to to be able to cover some more roads. Because I personally, I think we could probably, and I've I've used this many times. In fact, if we had twenty million dollars a year to jump on it, we could be paving roads and it wouldn't be that we run out of roads. That's that's, I think, the situation we're in. We do the best we can, but we need some more money to be able to get to the roads. And I will also tell you, I've been around, this is my thirteenth year, my road's never been paved, it's beat up. And so there are a lot of roads worse than my road. And and so county commissioners don't pick the roads. It's done by people who have the expertise to find the roads that need the assistance quick so they don't wash out and cost us a fortune, which has happened to us a few times.
I waited till the end because my question or comment is transportation related, but it's not T spas related. Funded state money, I believe, has still one seventy. And I spoke last week about the State Road three sixteen project at Dials Mill Road. And I've been doing some more research and getting some more information over the past week and looking at crash statistics on the DOT website, starting with Jimmy Daniel Road heading west. There are four roads that cross three sixteen that don't have a stoplight. Starting at Jimmy Daniels, you head west, there's Julian Drive, McNutt Creek Road, Dials Mill Road and Dials Mill Extension. And in terms of terms of crashes, Jimmy Daniel far exceeds all of the others. But they, in the past ten years, there were no fatal crashes. Only one of the remaining four intersections had any fatal crashes. And that was McNutt Creek Road that had four fatal crashes in the past ten years. Three of those were in the last five years. So Julian Drive, Dials Mill Road and Dials Mill Extension had zero fatal crashes. And they had fewer crashes than McNutt Creek Road. I also found in two thousand nine, a transportation plan that listed grade separation at Jimmy Daniel and McNutt Creek Road as a project. It wasn't in the funded list, but it had a project number assigned to it at by DOT. And so that would have been more than ten years ago. So that was before these four fatal crashes at McNutt Creek Road. According to the DOT website, construction at McNutt Creek and three sixteen won't occur for another six years. Dials Mill Extension will have construction in three years. So I'm just, I know you don't make the decisions. But I just, it puzzles me and wondered if you might have any thoughts on why the McNutt or the Dials Mill area has been prioritized over McNutt Creek Road that has had fatal crashes in the past? And, you know, if you extrapolate, could potentially have more before any construction occurs there. And maybe that's a rhetorical question since it's not under your control.
Yeah, Showman Nux Creek is scheduled for construction in twenty twenty-six. And Dials Mill Extension is the twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe. So they're not that far apart. I don't know that that will actually stick. These are fluid numbers depending on funding. Once they find out how much it's going to cost at Dials Mill, that may bump some of these others up to move quicker till they wait till they get more money. And I I know you based on fatalities, but and I haven't had a chance, I'm going to go back with the sheriff's office and pull. Seems like I recall there's been quite a few at Dials Mill and Dials Mill Extension just this year with some serious accidents. I don't know how how recent your data is. But in in seeing some of the reports coming in, all this is going to happen, three sixteen is going to be a limited access thoroughfare. So something's got to happen at Dials Mill and Dials Mill Extension. I don't know if you were here, they're they're hoping to present up to four possibilities for that intersection. They're still working on it, and so there'll be four options for you to look at and kind of make comment on. But I think all these intersections are are serious safety concerns for us that need to be addressed as quickly as possible. If there's any way we could move them all up quicker, I would definitely advocate for that.
Dan McGee, locked the Lumen Circle. My lovely wife just texted me, she asked if you know anything about a experiment station. I think G dot says it was supposed to start April or May. I know that's not specifically T spas, but if you have an answer to that, a couple of things. I've asked you all for years, I know it's a state road, but a OVP, one of the better parks in northeast Georgia. It's tough getting in and out right now. Bless the heart of the sheriff deputy, him or her who's out there. I know when I drive home at night and it suns in the eye, but we got to do something about OVP. Hopefully T spas can help. That sheriff deputy, you know, a half mile down the road, lost a deputy years ago in front of the elementary school. Got to got to do something with OVP entrance on on fifty-three. Hopefully T spas can help. I know Commissioner Daniel in April two thousand nineteen presented to the Chamber of Commerce, the master plan for a possible two hundred and fifty acre park at over Rocky Branch, maybe T spas can help prep that site. I know you said it's between five and twenty years to get that going. But there'll be a huge amount of traffic going in and out of that site. So maybe that can be just on the list, hopefully. Looking forward to when that comes through. Quick thing with rails and trails, at the April two thousand seventeen Town Hall is at. We talk about rails, trails a lot. I think connecting the high schools and OVP and kind of destinations is great. We also want to have some kind of off-road rails and trails, where it's the old railroad lines or whatever, purely from economic development, no matter what political party you are. Everywhere in Georgia has done kind of recreation rails, trails, whether it's Belt Line, Silver Comet, Gainesville, Carrollton, huge economic development. So we want to connect sites, I got high schooler, middle schooler, would love to see them walk or bike to school. But also kind of the off-road rails and trails at three point seven million mentioned. And last thing, with T spas, maybe we can look at putting some money in at the intersection of Hagman and four forty-one. Bottleneck right now, racetrack and and the fire station car wash, but y'all approved the Checkers or Sonic that's going to go there. I know the planning commission voted unanimously against it. Buffer is going to go from fifty foot to twelve foot there. Kind of surprised y'all. I mean, five hundred vehicle trips from that fast food restaurant there. I'm surprised planning commission said heck no. And you all approved it and no one made any comment or or explanation why you guys overturned the planning commission. But that's tough now, drive it every day. My seventeen-year-old is not a good driver, drives it. Maybe the T spas can widen or or do some safety things with that intersection. Disappointed, the fast food thing, it's kind of, you know, kind of Gwinnett County type of move. But if we're going to have that, maybe please look at some safety improvements there. It's tough right now in the mornings, afternoons. It's going to be tougher with the five hundred trips from the fast food location. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the residents of Dials Mills, we deeply appreciate the responsiveness we've had from the Board of Commissioners to our concerns with the three sixteen project. We understand it's the the G dot issue and really the county is in the similar situation we are, is hoping to get input. But we just wanted to say thank you for a couple of you visiting with us this past week. We continue to extend our invitation for the others to come see our predicament of our subdivisions location. And we just wanted to say thank you for good government for Oconee County.
We did have some questions submitted in writing by Ms. Galbinko. First one, with the recent development projects approved by the board, including many reduction in requested buffers, will the county set the example by designing the new administrative building, keeping as many trees and natural beauty of the land and not clear the, cut the site? So I will tell you that the development firm that we're using, they've, they're doing a complete tree inventory. We are trying to save as many trees that are on there now that are of good quality and can last. So we're not really not going to be any mass grading that we want to do. As they get in to figure out where a rock is and stuff like that, it's going to dictate some of that as well. But we will have an aggressive plan to put trees back if we take them out. And we we, that's going to be our, I guess, legacy project for this this board is putting that up. A lot of the buffer reductions. At your time, I think we did one last week where it was right next to. Unfortunately, most of the property in Oconee County is is designated agriculture, even though it's not viable for agriculture, which is the, for our site right now that we're planning to build on, is zoned agriculture. So reducing the buffer from fifty to the ten that's required for the like uses. If if that's the one you were talking about, anybody want to add anything? In recent time, citizens approved spas projects were funded with a sales tax that were collected and in the bank. Why has the board changed their financial philosophy? And recently approving bonding against the future collections to start projects immediately? For example, why is the urgent need to construct administrative building when building materials and supplies are at their highest levels in years? That was approved in the spas. I think if you look at OVP, we're still paying on that. So the big projects do have a history of being bonded out. I wish we could collect enough to build a administrative building. And since this thing was talked about prior to two thousand four, I'm not sure we're really rushing anything to get there. We do have a need to separate the administrative and the court processes. And I think that's what we're doing. And as we get the design done, I mean, we still have the budget and that the budget's the budget. If construction costs are too high, we'll just have to wait a little bit till they come back down or or figure out some way to fund additionally. As well, money is at an all-time low, we got less than one percent on that bonding when it was issued. Given that the planning commission comprised of Oconee County citizens, citizens appointed by the board and his advisory body to them, explain how recent proposed project, the planning commission unanimously recommended disapproval and the board voted unanimously to approve the proposal. How can these two groups have such different opinions?
I don't know how many rezones. I don't know how many rezones over twelve and a half years I've had a part in. We don't always agree with planning commission. That's just the way it is. We don't always agree. I spend, let me give you for instance, the, the one that Mr. McGee brought up, the whatever it's going to be hamburger place, ice cream. I knew it as an ice cream place when it first came up. I don't know how many times I was down at the planning commission office talking to Guy Herring about that intersection and what had been discussed with the applicant, what the county was requesting of the applicant. The applicant agreed to pay along with the applicant across the street where the Oak County State Bank Operations Center is located and was bought by somebody to turn it into a new project. And, and let me bring up the one because it's, it's pretty new and we had a split vote. So did the planning commission. I didn't vote to move the stone store in front of somebody's front yard. Planning commission said to do it. Now, all I'm saying is, we don't always agree. But at the end of the day, the county commissions are the ones, are the ones that get sued by the applicant, not the planning commission. Mr. Tucker does a good job of explaining the fact that it is a hearing board, similar to a preliminary hearing in a criminal case. You get to hear what the other side says. But I, I listened to some of the planning commission folks. I didn't agree. I didn't think it was spot zoning. You got a, a car wash, you got a racetrack, you got an industrial business across the street and it's spot zoning? And, and we can't turn something down just because people don't like it. That is going to get us in court and it's a good chance we'd lose the case and your tax dollar's gone down the drain. So I'm telling you, a lot of these five folks spend a lot of time doing homework on what might be able to be worked out because there are property rights in this state. You just can't say, I don't want it. You better have some reasons. And if, if our staff who are professionals say, yes, we agree. We agree with what the applicant's doing with conditions. And our traffic engineer says, yes, this, these are the improvements that need to be made. Okay, I go against them. You know what the applicant does? The applicant uses our own people against us because they're the ones that said in the report that it can be done. So I'm just telling you, we don't always agree with the planning commission. But at the end of the day, the five of us are the ones that get sued. Not the planning commission. You'll never see the planning commission's name probably mentioned in a lawsuit. So that's, that's my tidbit for the day. He's not going to put cows out there, Dan. Yeah, and if he, if he complies with the comp plan, that's another issue. If, if the applicant comes in, let me say this, I have seen plenty of rezones I thought, I don't know why. But I strike it because it's a why. But if he comes in and he or she complies with the comp plan and we have spent a lot of money over the years developing a comp plan to put certain things, certain places. And so, okay, he complies with the comp plan. The traffic engineer on our side says this can be done. He's going to this, he's paid for. What have I got left? I don't like. I understand where some people want it or what, but I it's okay. I think so. I don't know how many times. So I'll leave it at that. Well, yeah, I, I apologize to any of those. I had two people contact. Over with the stone store and that project, I don't know how many hundreds. I don't know how many hundreds. We probably had signed petitions about the public's issue over at Mark and the connector. I don't know how many hours I spent, spent over there. And I don't go and, and tell people how many hours I did. I don't keep a tab on it. But I do, I try to do my homework as best I can. Some folks may not like the result, but I try to, anybody that knows me and my history, I try to go by that comp plan as much as anybody. Because I think if we're going to hang the comp plan or anything about it in the courthouse, it ought to stand for something or get it off the wall. And that's how I feel. That's how I make my judgments. I got professional people in planning. We're paying them to help us because I'm not a professional planner. That's not my role. I'm just a public servant trying to do the people's work, same as these four guys. So that's, if I, if I should have said something that night, I didn't. Because I thought Guy Herring made a really good explanation about what future fixes were going to be. So I didn't go take a poll on these guys to see y'all going to say anything or not. I was okay. So. That's, that's long and short of it.
Dan, could I just, I mean, I hate after Chuck did that so well, explain his position. I, I know where, I hear where you come about the planning commission. I, I served on the planning commission. So I have got a lot of respect for what they do for our community and I understand their role. When I came on the Board of Commissioners, I thought, you know, zoning issues were, you know, down the list of important things. I thought, you know, taxation, you know, having clean water. But no, zoning, I have come to realize is probably the number one responsibility that I have as a commissioner. So I take it very seriously. We don't talk among ourselves about that. I, I did not have any communications. I do talk to Guy Herring, who is a very capable planning director. I have a lot of respect for him in the short time that I've got to know him. He shoots straight with me and I appreciate that. And that particular rezone that you're talking about, I think if you look at, well, Chuck talked about the, you know, the other rezone. One of the things that I'm, I'm keen on is protecting existing neighborhoods that abut to a rezone. I think if you go back in my short time, the rezones that I have opposed have been those that would, you know, impinge on a adjoining neighbor that had been there, a neighborhood or someone with their home. In that case, the two adjoining property owners, I'm telling you, their intentions is to develop. They're not building houses and they're not going to put cows out there. I talked to one of them. His intent is to put offices, office buildings on his property. And of course, if you go across the street of, of Highway two oh seven, whatever we call it now, you have the Ivy property. Now that's, that's a development waiting to happen one day. So what I learned in talking with, with Mr. Herring is that they're already looking at that entire area and the improvements are going to have to be made. And of course, what Chuck's talking about, the, the project across the street, I'm, I'm not sure what he's calling that, but where the stone store is now, all that's going to be totally redone. Their, their improvement's going to have to be made at that intersection because of that rezone that was approved earlier this year. So I take rezones very seriously. I listen. If, if someone calls me and wants me to come out to, to visit with them, I will do that. I will not talk to the developer by myself. I have, I, I can, I can read what he has. What I want to hear is the people who are going to be impacted next door, whether it's a neighborhood or an adjoining property owner in the case of the one you're talking about. So I, I appreciate, you know, what you're saying, but I, I guarantee you, I, I, I'm taking this rezone business very, very serious and it has come to be the number one on my list of the importance of the role I have as a board, as being on the Board of Commissioners is looking at these rezones because it does impact everybody. And I, I appreciate your, you know, comments and bringing that up.
As I mentioned earlier, so the building design process is underway. Our architect has met with all the department heads to talk about their needs and get the input there. Process is going really well. We expect to award a construction manager at RISD at sometime in October. Those bid packages are out and have been received back in. And as mentioned earlier, the financing is in place on that. Also a little bit about water resources, Cause Creek upgrade is under engineering now. That'll take us up from one and a half million gallons a day up to three million gallons a day. And as part of that process, we're also looking at gray water for irrigation and also bio solids composting to try to keep that out of the landfills. Also tied to that is being able to get to three billion gallons a day will free up the LES for the future park that was mentioned earlier as well. Water Resources is also working on an updated construction or capital improvement plan. Broadband, as you might have heard earlier, we've terminated our relationship with Smart City Capital. And we're all talking to other potential participants in that program now. The federal funding that's being made available has sparked a lot of interest. So we've had two or three people come to us in the last several weeks with, with wanting to sit down and talk about possibilities there. So just wanted to let you know that, that remains, remains a top priority is broadband in Oak County County. Parks and Rec, we can increase funding for maintenance and repairs of our assets again this past budget year. If you've been out on the fields, you can see the results of the aggressive turf management that Lisa's running out there, keeping those fields looking good under very high use situations. Let's see, fall programs are just over two thousand participants this year. And that's a twenty percent increase from two thousand nineteen. So that's huge volume increase. Also, if you need a part-time job, we'd need some park assistance. So if you'll see Lisa afterwards, she'll fix you up. Our historic properties, the improvements are complete. The central schoolhouse at Heritage Park has been completed. They do a lot of structural work there. Also, the Eagle Tavern. And we'll have, we have some additional funding in the Splot and we'll go look at some of, we'll go back and reassess where we're at. William Daniel House needs some work and also Elder Cover Bridge, Elder Mill Cover Bridge will be on that as well. If you haven't been out to Animal Services, their upgrade was completed earlier this year, looking really good. It's operating well. And then before long, we're going to have the Senior Center expansion underway. We are having some supply chain issues, getting the materials that are needed. So it hadn't quite started yet, but that should be starting very shortly. There are no more questions, comments or emotional outbursts? Thank you again so much for coming. We appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.